Chair person, I think.
No, shut up. I'm not staying very long.
No, you have to. Hey, you have to. Why? Yes, for the whole meeting, we stay for yours.
No, you don't.
Yes, we do. You don't. Because we just don't stay till eleven. How'd you guys do last night?
Ten.
Oh, yeah.
It actually been a half hour meeting.
Right. It really should have been.
But this lady from Safe Place, isn't that a parking thing?
No, that's um for teens or...
What does it mean, the same place as we live?
Well, two communities, there's one down on Pearl. Um, the one...
Well, that's the new one, that new facility.
Yeah, renovated.
Yeah, surprise.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Isn't that place, that program called Safe Parking is operated by the uh...
Safe Park.
Yeah, Safe, so yeah.
Safe Park.
Something like that.
Starkfish?
Starkfish, yeah.
Starkfish, yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. All right. So let's have a roll call here.
Okay, I've got it.
Uh, the only, in reviewing the agenda, I think, um... Do we have a presentation tonight?
Uh, that would be a change to the agenda. Unfortunately, our speaker had to go out of town for a funeral to the Midwest. Uh, and she apologized for that, but she would be happy to come in March.
Excellent, okay. So we'll look forward to that presentation in the future. All right, I'd like to open it up to a public comment for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. I don't think we have much, except for our work plan.
Good evening, my name is Dave Pacheco, and on behalf of Councilman Wizard and myself, we just wanted to thank you for coming to the February thirteenth meeting related to homeless. I didn't have a chance to introduce you, and I do apologize, but a lot was going on during the beginning of the meeting, and but your participation was noted. Uh, I think your involvement with this homeless issue is going to be very significant in the upcoming months and years, and I know that you'll do a very good job. And thank you so much for your service.
Public comment is still open? All right. Public comment is closed. Um, uh, for the minutes of, from last meeting, I know that Natalia was absent, but I believe in item nine, some of her comments from the previous agenda made it on to the minutes. So I just wanted to amend that.
Mm-hmm. I was absent, and yet there was notes of me speaking.
It was so important.
It was.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Yep.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Uh, I believe we are gonna skip item six and look forward to that presentation on Safe Place when our speaker returns. And, um, item B, update on city council action as it relates to homeless services. Um, so we, I attended the meeting last night, which is, which was one of three city council meetings, I believe, that were speaking to the Heat Fund, and then there was a fourth meeting that was a town hall that Councilmember John Wizard and Councilmember Dave Pacheco put on, which was fabulous, and a lot of hard work has gone into that. Uh, I'm excited to update, uh, the committee that last night at the meeting, the city decided to move forward with sending a letter to the county saying that they would like to see the community human services and Gathering for Women partner for a shelter on Broadway. Uh, and I don't know if anybody else, Ms. Nancini was there. Do you have any comments about last night or the process?
It was a wonderful meeting.
Okay. Mr. Pastor Murray?
Last night? Last night was a very great meeting. It was very, um, informative, and the presentation was actually wonderful, given by Gathering Place and Community Human Services, and it did change a lot of opinions of people on, may going forward with a shelter for the homeless.
Just thank you, Chair. Yeah, last night's meeting was very, uh, positive and impactful, uh, for the residents of Seaside, and, uh, I just look forward to it becoming more and more, uh, of the start. And thank our city manager and our city council and Gathering for Women and Community Human Services for, uh, coming together and presenting a great plan, a great work plan, and can see nothing but good, nothing but good for Seaside. Thank you.
And I might be so bold as to mention that several council members requested that the homeless committee possibly participate in this shelter in some capacity, whether we receive updates about the shelter or something more. So we will look forward to hearing from them and further direction for that.
I just wanted to add, thank you very much, Councilman Pacheco, for the, the comments that you made in the beginning. Uh, I would just say personally, I did initially feel left out from the, um, planning of the, I think it was the February thirteenth town hall meeting, but I understand that the ball is moving very, very quickly, and so you needed to have that meeting as fast as it needed to take place. I was not here, uh, last night, but I did watch some of the video online, and I am really excited about the direction in which the city is going, in which Gathering for Women is going, and Community Health Services. Uh, I was listening to NPR the other day, and I have a bias, which you all know about, which is my, it comes from my public health background. And, um, I do believe that there are certain things that we need to, or that if addressed from a public health perspective, could move along smoother and, and easier. So I know the deadline, correct me if I'm wrong, it's April, the deadline for the application is April first. And so on to the, the wonderful presentation that has already been done as a suggestion for the RFP. I would like to, unless it was already suggested last night, add another partner to that, that mix, and that is our very own hospital, Chomp. In Chicago, the University of Chicago has a really novel idea, in which they're, they have a program called Better Health Through Housing, and I made copies of the article for everyone. They are taking a housing-first approach in the same spirit and vein in which we're doing. Uh, but they're partnering with academic institutions, they're partnering with their hospital, which already has, uh, data and information on frequent users. And we're very fortunate at Community Hospital of, um, of the Peninsula that they have a foundation. And so the question of sustainability, which we should all be concerned with when it comes to one-time funding, it's, it becomes more of a vincible issue when you, when you're married with something that's generating revenue. So I have articles here for everyone on that model, which is from the University of Chicago, and I want us to think about who can we talk to at the, the hospital? What board of trustee members can we access so that they can become partners in this health issue?
Um, may I inform you that Montage has endorsed the project? Uh, CHS and Gathering for Women? And I think as that partnership evolves, that might turn into something that you're speaking of right now. But, uh, yeah, excellent. Okay, good. And Latoya, you were there last night?
I was not there last night, but I did watch the video as, as, uh, my colleague did. Um, and I, I believe, uh, the council had excellent things to say, especially in terms of the tiny homes. I believe Councilman, uh, Kupersky, she mentioned possibly establishing tiny homes in the future as well. That, uh, allows us to scale in terms of permanent housing. Uh, I believe shelters, as I've heard other people say in times past, it's only but a Band-Aid. It places a Band-Aid on the situation. But I believe if we're able to perhaps partner with, with every entity that we decide to go with, being able to scale their model to provide a permanent, a permanent or transitional housing, supportive housing as well, whereas the shelter can facilitate those that will never come off the street and, you know, stand to be a warmest shelter in the events that they want to come in out of the cold, you know? Um, so that's just some things that I heard come across in the meeting on last night, the tiny homes, and also Mayor Ogusby, he mentioned the Habitat for Humanity model as well, possibly incorporating that, um, into our, our infrastructure in terms of, uh, developing the shelter and also transitioning to transitional permanent housing for those that are in need of housing.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, now I guess we'll move on to C, Heat Grant Update.
Uh, so I attended that meeting along with Committee Member Allen, and, um, so we had two representatives from Seaside, which was the first criteria in being able to apply for the grant. So it's been documented that we were there. Uh, it was a two-hour presentation, fifty-seven slides. I sent them to all the members. Um, they, they went step by step through the process and pointed out a number of things that were very important, such as if we're looking at a shelter and capital expenditures, it has to follow the housing-first model. So, um, so nobody can be excluded from, from that, uh, being allowed into the, into the shelter. Uh, the, um, trying to think, some of the, the other things that were important, certainly the dates for the application. Um, it'll be open March first and due, I think, at the close of business, but it is on April first. Uh, um, the, um, I, so one of the reasons that, that, um, we attended for grant application, because we may not be making the application specifically for the shelter, the capital project, or the services, was the other thing that council discussed last night was to look for other funds and other services that could be provided, and there was a whole list of those within, um, the criteria or the no-fo of the grant, and looking for partnerships. So, uh, one of the things that we will get within the next day or so is the list of agencies that attended, and we can possibly look through and find out if there are certain services that we would like to provide in this, or in the city that we could partner with these agencies that already have the experience, because that's a very important part of the application, is that you have some experience that, um, you've proven that you're, you're well-versed in whatever service you want to provide. So, uh, we'll get that information. Um, Committee Member Allen, maybe you can fill in some of the blanks?
Oh, sure. In terms of, uh, the application, as you stated, it, it will be due, um, April first. Um, April eighth, the, uh, committee will convene to, uh, rank the applications based on, uh, the criteria that each entity presents, and, uh, that's how they'll prioritize each application based on what your, uh, entity is trying to, you know, convey in terms of utilizing the, uh, funding. Um, I think that was one. Um, two, by June, all of the, uh, contracts will be finalized, meaning that all the applications will be processed, and all the funding will be dispersed or allocated by June, by the end of June. Uh, let's see. Several notes here. We've heard about, you know, facilitating these shelters for women and children first, but under the heat, if those... but under the HEAP, if those HEAP funds are allocated for whatever structure that we're trying to utilize, it has to be housing-first and that's mandatory. So that might be an issue in terms of women and children solely. We might have to facilitate men as well. So that might be, maybe something within the application that needs to be specified as well. Two stipulations, they said we could, we could reject, I would say, a homeless individual if they came to request housing and those are sex offenders and those that have been charged with producing methamphetamines. So those two types of individuals, we could reject in, from receiving housing if it posed to be a problem. Let's see, there are certain system criterias that we will be mandated to utilize. If we go forth or the co-facilitator of the shelter, they will be mandated to use a specific system to document and utilize within intake in the shelter. There possibly, possibly will not be a round two of funding, we've heard that come across. We have to look at the funds as being a one-time deal. So if we're planning, we have to have other outside resources or private funding to continue to facilitate the shelter. And if we do, say for instance, use Broadway, the Broadway facility, we have to be prepared to facilitate that, that shelter for 10 years, 10 years or so as a minimum. Let's see, capital projects. Yes, also within the application, as I mentioned, like the tiny homes, whatever it is that we want to incorporate within the application in terms of future projects, they want to know those, those plans. So we have to incorporate the plans that we may have. So that might entail our working plan that we're trying to establish or create here, sending up to the city council to see if they approve to, to further, you know, add to, to this project in the future. We establish a shelter, but say in the next two to three years, we plan to scale to the permanent or transitional housing. Those things we need to notify the leadership council about. I think that's basically it. Whoever we, we co-facilitate this endeavor with, they'll be responsible, or we may be responsible for providing quarterly and semi-annual reports for the HEAP funding that we utilize as well. I think that basically, pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for us before you put it out?
I think the city manager might have a comment?
Oh, great.
Thank you, Chief. Craig Malin, City Manager. Chief went to the meeting this afternoon while I was volunteering for some, in support of some Seaside youth. But prior to that, at 11 o'clock today, I wanted to update the committee and two of my bosses, who happened to be in the room, on a meeting that Mayor Ogusby called. And there was four or five people there. Reverend Murray was in attendance. We had CPK and the Village Project represented. And there was a representative from MPUSD which, which... Last night, at the city council meeting, in addition to the expression of support for the shelter, there was the direction that the, first at the city attended the meeting and of course the chief did an excellent job attending the meeting, and, on the business conference, and to think through, could we use some other parts of the funding for other homeless facilities or services? So the mayor had a brainstorming meeting with the folks I, I said was in attendance today from about 11 o'clock till noon and I was in attendance at that meeting. I want to give you an update on what, on what we talked about there and where we're going, because this is a very fast-moving thing. But before I do that, I've never seen this sheet of paper before and it caused me great concern as I saw it. So this is a list of students who are classified as homeless in Seaside, in other schools. I happen to work for Seaside. And there's 534 students that are classified as homeless. Those aren't all unsheltered. If you flip the page, you see that 16% are in shelters, 9% are in hotels or motels, 5% are unsheltered, and 70% are doubled up or tripled up. So these are families sharing houses. And I'll just say, when I saw this, I, you know, I've been volunteering at high school a little bit and I have some knowledge of what happens there and the challenges that we face. But I was taken aback, you know, 534 students are homeless. And I recalled that when I was in fifth, sixth and seventh grade, I was homeless. And I can tell you it's not very pleasant and it's not something you ever really forget. So I'm sort of in my line of work to try to make that better for others. And we had an excellent discussion and Reverend Murray can add to or correct me if I'm wrong. These are my notes from the meeting. We talked about six different things, areas of work that we might, that we might work toward. And these are, I'm going to work toward the most complex one, everyone knows. There's money available for rental assistance and maybe we can find somebody who is good at that. The city's not necessarily good at that. We don't have a housing program. But maybe we can find someone and, and the idea was, can we assemble some of these ideas, some very big ideas, and package them up as a city? And the city would be the applicant. And this is news, you know, to my two bosses, by the way, which is why I wanted to get it out in the open. And then the gentleman who was representing MPUSD said one of their biggest concerns was transportation of homeless students. And then I raised my hand because I can be curious at times. And I said, well, you know, wouldn't it be better if the kids were just near the schools? And thinking back to my homeless experience, if I would have been at the school or near the school and could have accessed the school and it's all of its resources, any library and showers and all that, I mean, that would have made my life so much better. So rather than, you know, putting these kids on buses and vans and moving them around, what if we had families actually at the schools close to where they were? And again, if you look at the, for those who are watching, if this is televised, I don't know. You know, there's 118 middle, kids at Seaside Middle School and 110 at Seaside High School that are classified as homeless. So, you know, could we create villages within that, that space? I'm going to get back to that because that becomes tied with the most difficult thing to do. The other things that we talked about was the faith community potentially leading the effort of creating an expanded safe parking program here in Seaside. That happens currently and Reverend Murray took it as a task to reach out to other churches and try to collect what they're doing and what assistance they may need that might be packaged into a grant application. And we thank you for that. Then the CPY and the Village Project talked about the types of programming that they might be able to deliver. And then let me get to the two tough ones, which is providing some type of adult shelter as we have a discussion about our ordinance relating to sleeping on public property is no longer enforceable. There's been some recent court rulings that say that we, if somebody wants to camp out in front of city, sleep at, overnight in front of city hall, we can't stop them unless there's a place for them to go. So many cities are looking at these tiny homes or tents or something. And whether we designate a spot or go that far is entirely open question. There's been no decisions about that whatsoever. But at the council meetings, it has been referenced that maybe we could have, you know, some porta-potties or some portable showers. Maybe the city could try to secure the grant money in order to get a portable shower trailer and we could move that around. So that's just an idea. The other idea relates to tiny homes is this, again, if we could use school district property and that would be a preference, there are other ways that we could do that if we couldn't. But if we could use school district property to potentially create both affordable housing, and here's the trick, the affordable housing pays for the homeless shelters. If you're very smart about, about being efficient with land use and, and, you know, orientation of dwellings to each other, you could build small homes that are affordable, affordable for police officers, firefighters, teachers. And in, in selling or leasing, separate topic, which we'll have to work through, the property for those affordable housing units, you could create capital that would fund the homeless shelters. The tiny homes for homeless students and their families. That's possible. So, so since the meeting, I've been, I've been trying to think through how we might do that. I'll, you know, have a conversation with the superintendent. I know the superintendent is already supportive of the idea of potentially using school properties to support affordable housing for, for MPUSD staff because they have a very hard time recruiting and retaining, given the housing prices and giving teacher and staff salaries. So I know that they're, they're thinking through that and this HEAP grant opportunity might be the catalyst for the city, the school, and school district working together to do something like that. I just want to say again, that's just the creative thought that we had at this meeting. It was really just spurred by the, you know, rather than carting these kids around in a van or a bus, why don't we just put them close to the schools? Because if they were at, you know, if you were, if you were homeless in high, I wasn't homeless in high school. I was homeless in fifth, seventh grade. But if I was homeless in high school, it would be so much better if I was close to high school and could be certain that I could go all the way through that school because I live close to it. And, and, you know, we're, we're very, and by the way, we're working very hard. A lot of staff is working very hard on a lot of economic development. But I'll just say now, and this will be the first time I say it publicly, but people will get tired of me hearing it. Making sure that our Seaside children are secure and safe and well-educated, that's economic development. So I should probably go sit down because I've created controversy already. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. But again, it's moving at a fairly fast pace and I just wanted to let two of my bosses know and let the committee know and however you can help or we can help you, we're in. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think that might kind of lead into a bigger picture. We're doing our work plan tonight and perhaps with the timeline speeding up and our role to make recommendations to the city council, maybe we can discuss having a special meeting to make some recommendations for designating some of these funding to be directed towards some of the projects we'd like to do. I guess we can perhaps move ahead with item 7A.
Before we go, I just had one question about the presentation that you attended. Was there any, I did go through the slides. Thank you so much for sending these to us. In the course of the conversation that was had in the presentation, was there anything that was discussed about whether or not we could or could not make whatever project we decide an economic engine? Because I really, I'm a proponent, I'm a very progressive when it comes to nonprofit organizations. I don't under, just because we're nonprofit organizations or just because I work for a nonprofit organization, I don't understand why we can't be an economic engine. And there are several nonprofits that work with the homeless population, but they are social enterprises and so they generate revenue in the same spirit as, as what Goodwill does, for example. Was there anything that was discussed where they said you could not create something that would generate its own revenue? I don't think they would discourage that because that would be making something that's sustainable. But it, it teeters on becoming a for-profit, but not because it's a soc, it's social innovation. Was there anything that was discussed that would say no to something like that?
Nothing specific. The, the full two hours of the meeting really went line by line with the, the grant application. And there's recommendations or topics or service areas, I guess would be the best way to describe that they're, they believe the funding should go towards, which are the things that are in need of right now. But I don't think they're going to turn down or not accept any ideas that would be innovative by any means.
If I could add to that, actually they did have a sec, a session, well, section, where they did specifically talk about that in terms of the low-income housing generating, say 10%, say you were to charge 10% of the, of the income, you know, based on, you know, based, income base, that, that income that you generate can go back to facilitate, you know, the continuance of the shelters or, you know, whatever plan that we have structured. So they did mention that and it's completely fine to reabsorb those funds. However, they, you know, the HEAP funding will be strictly monitored. So to buy a parcel of land at a specific price and then at the end, 2021, June 31st, 2021, you decide to sell that parcel and not continue, continue what you stated that you were going to do within the application, that's a violation of the HEAP funds. But to reabsorb those funds in the, you know, from low-income monies, that's completely fine.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so can we dive into the work plan? Do you have a preference on, so I have a list. And perhaps making a priority from the recent presentation that city manager Malin presented and the staggering and heartbreaking numbers that we have youth that are homeless. and the staggering and heartbreaking numbers that we have youth that are homeless in our city of Seaside. Incorporating in our work plan that over the course of the next couple of weeks, we do a special meeting and make recommendations about how the HEAP funding can be directed, specifically, and this is a discussion, I was thinking, consider finding opportunities to partner with MPUSD for a liaison specifically for homeless Seaside youth. Incorporating perhaps Mr. Malin's idea about partnering with MPUSD for a bigger scope, including housing, program delivery, transportation.
Only my thought, maybe if these are items that are, you would like included or ideas for the HEAP grant.
Right.
It's kind of a sooner rather than later because it's an extremely comprehensive grant document. So maybe this should be separate from the annual work plan and focus and maybe come up with these ideas tonight and not in a special meeting because staff will need direction on.
Absolutely. So maybe giving direction tonight as part of our work plan to direct you to, for the HEAP fund, which is happening sooner or later, to give you direction for the HEAP fund items.
I'm just, I'm wondering about procedure. If, since it's not on the agenda, can we give direction or can we give ideas or, I don't know.
That's part of the reason, well, I was thinking as our work plan, that we're going forward as our work plan with the intention of capitalizing on this moment of HEAP funding.
Yeah, yeah. I just don't want to violate any of the training that you just had. So you're the chair and I think you can determine maybe what would be the best course of action if we need to separate these things, whether we should make some decisions tonight so staff has time.
So maybe perhaps we could do work plan with some direction for staff and then if, because I think we can't recommend tonight to the city council because we have to, that's an action item. So that will have to be, I believe, a special meeting if I understand correctly. Yeah, yes. So we can do direction tonight and then if we have a quorum, make the next special meeting a recommendation officially.
Okay.
To the city council if they'd like to do that, if we would like to do that. Okay. Now, I don't know if this would be just easy, I can go over these and then email them to you later? Okay, okay. I would like to add to, consider asking the council to adopt a policy of no fees for recreation department activities if anybody is receiving public funds like SNAP or WIC, reduced-price lunches. Consider asking the council to amend planning and zoning codes to allow for small neighborhood food pantries, like the little library pantries they have around Seaside. Perhaps lockers for storage for individuals and families that are without homes. Consider asking the council for permission to spend up to $5,000 of the $30,000 that we are annually budgeted, if that is future, if that's continued, as approved by the city manager for emergent needs and unplanned situations. All other expenditures recommended to the city council. Hold a joint meeting with CDAC regarding CDVG funding specifically. Search for and identify appropriate lots for safe parking programs. Consider asking council to adopt a barrier elimination policy and prohibit using public funds to support groups that have discriminatory or non-secular rules, policies, and disqualifying criteria. Consider asking council to adopt a housing-first policy to include in the shelter ordinance and then partner with the potential shelter on Broadway or Olympia, whichever it ends up being on, to receive monthly reports and updates if that's what the council would like us to do. I will send you that list. And are there any other items that anybody would like to add to the work plan?
I would like to ask the city manager if I could, may we identify additional parcels of land that we could possibly utilize in addition to, or as an alternative to using the school property here in Seaside? Are there any additional pieces of land, parcels of land that we may identify that we could possibly utilize to facilitate transitional housing?
The shortest answer is, I don't think that that's necessary or maybe even a very good idea at this moment in time. And there, and I think you, I think what you would do if you wanted to do that maybe at the next meeting would be to ask, you could either make comments to the draft general plan update that's in progress or ask the plan commission to look at that topic because that's really a planning and land use topic.
Could we, we could make that as part of our work, our work plan as a
Sure.
Going forward, identifying, but to
Sure.
Have a presentation.
Officially do that, it would require a zoning action.
Yeah, sure.
Also, I don't know if this will be in conjunction with submitting a request for the HEAP funding, but as we're working through this HEAP funding, if we could add a stipulation to scale, scale the plan of any co-facilitator that we work with to include transitional housing within the next year to 24 months of establishing the shelter in conjunction with utilizing the HEAP funding, I think that would be a good idea if we could submit that to the city council to add that stipulation, to add as a future plan to scale, scale whatever, whichever entity that we co-facilitate the shelter with to scale their program, their plan to incorporate transitional housing. I think that's really the only true definition of housing first. A shelter only puts a Band-Aid on it, but we need to begin to look at developing some type of transitional housing. So if we could pass that along to city council, that would be great.
If I'm not mistaken and maybe there's somebody out there that can answer this a little bit more clearly than I can, but I believe Gatherings for Women and CHS in their presentation last night have a similar model. They have a pathway out of homelessness and part of that in their organization is kind of set up and I don't know the details, but I believe, I believe that's part of, I don't know. Okay, okay. That's what I understood.
Okay.
So, but I would have to review the presentation, but I believe they are already out in front of that.
But is that just to facilitate women and children or men as well?
I think that's, that's kind of a, it's an involving process. So I think there are many factors involved and the HEAP funding is one of it and the organization is part of it. And then, of course, the citizens of the community, there are community members of Seaside are also being listened to. So I think there's some big pieces moving. Yeah, yeah.
So all of these suggestions were just wonderful and as I was processing them, the only one that gave me pause was the little food pantries. And that is because, not that I don't think it's a great idea, it's because I'm just afraid that if there's something in there that happens to spoil because of our weather, we just have to make sure, and it's possible that the Good Samaritan laws would cover that. That's a law that covers most food banks because if something just happens to be spoiled or it happens to be part of a recall, that covers most food banks in terms of litigation. I don't know if that would happen if we ourselves were to set up food pantries outside of our homes. That's the only suggestion that made me a little nervous. But I think the suggestions were really, really good. I just want to emphasize again, I just want to make sure that we're working closely with council and the community with ideas, with brainstorming. I like the idea, if it's still possible, to have another special meeting, if you want to have, if there's time to have another community meeting. I know the community development department has them often. I love it when they ask us to brainstorm and do the activities with the post-it notes, what do you think is a priority? I don't know that we've done that for this grant in particular. It would be, I think with all of the momentum that's built, there's time and there's a lot of interest and passion to do that.
Has anybody been out to the current food bank that is in Salinas? It's a wonderful affair, a wonderful building. Melissa's done a great job with it. And also, a lot of the churches have food banks already that are giving, are taking care of food and everything. So I would say, yeah, there's a lot of it going on and we need to delve more into what is already here.
So perhaps as part of our work plan, check in with local faith-based and other entities that offer food bank-type items and find ways to collaborate with them?
Great idea. The food bank has opened up a brand-new building in Salinas and it's marvelous and wonderful. And there are a lot of faith-based that do have it on certain days of the month. I do know that they have a, one that comes to the local cities at different spots and I know it comes, I don't know what day it comes to Seaside, but I know one of the locations is Del Monte Manor, to where they come and they bring a truckload and they just lay it all out, you know, in organized manner. And it's just not for residents, but it's open to the general public. I just, I could gather more information regarding that and have it, you know, available at our next meeting and get a calendar of the local churches or organizations that might have active food banks, the timing that they give their food away and the locations. I can do that for you. And yeah, Salvation, Mr. Manson, he's always talking, but he's a wealth of knowledge. Salvation Army, you know, does it. And I don't know what they do, I know Salvation Army on Contra Costa that we just donate the money to does a mobile, you know, hot food, but I don't know if they go through Seaside. You know, do I know they got a great location at the Navy Postgraduate Pullout in Monterey, but I don't know if they, you know, come to Seaside. And they should, they're in Seaside, you know. And I think the homelessness, the homeless people that don't make it to that location can benefit from the portable food bank or if we could get the hot meals to them, you know, through Laguna Grande or whatever, or if churches, you know, and I know some churches go down there and walk around and give brown bag, you know, away, but as far as the organization in particular, I could find that information now that I know the pastor Luskier, him and his church does it and it's an ideal location. And I know that they have a food pantry. But, you know, that's a great, that's a great plan. And I think it'd be, I think it was something that we started talking about when we first met, one of the key ideas, you know, of how, you know, before we start bringing organizations in to make presentations, I know that that was one of the items on the plate of the homeless commission, you know, so maybe that could be one of our, you know, working ideas to pick back up and make sure it happens, you know, either by the committee or by a particular organization that we want to partner with to make sure that either every day there's a brown bag lunch or breakfast or something, you know, healthy, you know. One, or if we partner with Montage, you know, Medical, where their mobile, Mobile is a, Walgreens, which is a thoroughway for the homeless population, Charles Avenue is, they're from Laguna Grande to Fremont Street, they come through there. And during that time, you know, not only can they get a healthy meal, but they have a checkup.
Thank you. Those are excellent suggestions. So I guess maybe we could specifically target the HEAP funding and give direction to staff to come up with, and I do realize that the city council themselves are also coming up with ideas for applying for the HEAP funding with services and programs, but maybe some of the things that were discussed tonight, do you feel comfortable kind of putting that together for a special meeting that we can take action on? Or do you need?
You know, I think it really comes down to, once again, the timing. We're, our next council meeting is the seventh, which is next Thursday, a week from tonight, and then the 21st. And I guess I have to ask the city manager what kind of timing staff would need to include some of the ideas within a proposal. You know, as they had a brainstorming session this afternoon, I don't know if maybe just a brainstorming session and highlight those items that may be HEAP-related, that could be taken from tonight and added to the list. And then those items could be considered for the grant application.
Yeah. And I can also offer, because of the timeline, I can commit to coming to the city council But we've only kind of discussed this, so I wouldn't feel comfortable taking any action to represent the entire committee tonight at the council meeting, so.
I would, I would guess that if you had consensus tonight, that, you know, just because of that timeline and you're really presenting ideas, that may be sufficient.
I would recommend that Madam Chair would represent the homeless committee, speak on the behalf of the homeless committee at the next meeting for whatever presentation. I think you have the support.
One second.
So we won't be engaging the community? Well, I guess the, at the council meeting, that's where you'll get more input from the community and from our committee? Is that how that's going to? Is that how that's going to, I, I, I understand that the timeline is really compressed. I just think, like, for example, if you had the, the meeting today, the brainstorming session today, I would've loved to have been part of that brainstorming session. I've done some research, I've, I've, uh, gone out and, um, connected with this, um, this gentleman who's, uh, works out of the University of Illinois. I cannot make meetings, um, that happen during the workday because I'm working in Salinas. And I think it's just important when you have these brainstorming, uh, sessions that other people are invited as well, especially because, you know, I decided to volunteer for this, uh, committee. I bring a unique public health lens. And I just, I do feel like I've been left out of some of the conversation.
What I can add is on the March seventh city council agenda, there will be an update on the heap grants in progress. I actually hope to have something to present. As, as something, you know, conceptual, uh, to present so that the council can discuss it a bit. Where the city council has strategic planning on the twelfth. Uh, the, uh, the architects for the, for the civic campus are gonna be in town on the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. Uh, there's a city council meeting on the twenty-first. I'm guessing we're gonna end up with the city council meeting on the twenty-eighth. I'm just guessing at that, given the pace of all this. So, so there's opportunities to work around those dates that I just mentioned to add meetings. I think we should have meetings on the weekend, just honestly. Be- because we don't have time to waste and it's a, it's a good, you know, use of, you know, it, 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 it in part solves the problem of we have people who, who can't be here during the day. And then we, and then, you know, we have day jobs too. So, so, and, and it allows the people to, uh, maybe participate who, who otherwise couldn't participate. But, uh, I, I know that the council, I mean, to my bosses, they can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, values the committee's work and insight and would welcome participation. It's just a matter of scheduling that for, for folks.
So we have until April, April first to submit the applications. Um, we're gonna make recommendations. This is, this is, the city council will decide kind of what they would like to do, what, what kind of applications they would like to apply for, is that correct? Uh, during one of the meetings?
Yes, in theory.
Yes, in theory.
You know, first we have to assemble, um, the service providers and the ideas and, and, and put them into some sort of form so that the council can even first conceptualize them and, 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 and say, yes, keep going on that path. So this is gonna be a cyclical thing. There's gonna be two or three more meetings on this.
Yeah.
Uh, before the council says, yes, you can submit that. Which is why I think, you know, we're probably gonna have a meeting on the twenty-eighth 'cause it's a Thursday and it's an open day and it's three days before the deadline. And we're gonna need all the time in order to do anything of consequence. Oh, sure.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Wow, that's really, whew. When the, it's due on the first. Whoa. I mean, that's a possibility. I was hoping we could just do one more final push in the middle of, of March. And I think, I think it's tremendous, all of the, the publicity that this has gar- garnered, seriously, on social media and as well as, um, the news outlets. I think that's wonderful. That's why I'm thinking if you could, if there, if it was possible to do one more final community input push in the middle of the month, and with that fine tuning on the twenty-eighth. I mean, but you're probably gonna have more meetings in between then.
So here's what I'm hearing. Um, if the twenty-eighth, which is our normally scheduled meeting, will be perhaps the city council meeting, maybe we can move our regular meeting up um, and discuss the heat funding and make some recommendations to the council. Uh, agendize, um, action for some recommendations. Uh, their normal meetings are the seventh and the twenty-first. I won't be here the fourteenth. But I think you guys could carry on without me for one meeting. If we wanted to slip in on a regular Thursday night, but it might be kind of checking in with the city clerk and finding space. Maybe, yes. I won't be here that week, but I think that kind of fits with, um, the tight timeline, um.
If I could just suggest, again, this is, this is one person, but, uh, maybe, you know, the sixteenth might be better. Sixteenth is a Saturday, that might be a better date to, to, I'll just commit, if, if the, if the homeless committee wants to have a meeting on the sixteenth, staff will be there. Wait, I don't wanna speak for the chief, I'll be there.
I, I could be there after four, I work.
Okay.
So if an afternoon is okay, but, I mean, what is the consensus of the committee, I guess?
So now this meeting, just, just for clarification, the, is this a, a meeting where we would get more input from the committee, but also the, the public? The, like a final push from the public, is that?
Ever so respectful, it's your meeting. How do you want to structure the meeting, we'll be there to support you.
So we could, um, open it up as a, uh, agendize it for public comment for, um, what they would like to see the council ask for heat funding.
It could both be a review of the present status of the ideas that are in progress.
Yes.
And, and, you know, answering questions about them, uh, and soliciting, uh, other ideas. You know, to be fair, if we get an idea on the sixteenth and then we have twelve days to, not even twelve days, you know, we have like ten days to make it into a, a grant application, that's kind of tricky.
Throw a good idea out and just don't come late, 'cause I think you have the, not only do you have the idea, then you gotta find the partners, or then you gotta grant. And they gotta do the regular jobs as well. You know, so is it possible to have a subcommittee of this group, two or three members, whatever their, whatever the right number is, meet with you early, let's say, next week, like you did today, with the other so-called subcommittees. You could attach those brainstorming ideas with their brainstorming ideas, making a complete package of brainstorming ideas. So that way, if there's good ideas, then you have the time potentially to move them forward at their earliest timeframe of ability to meet their needs and their desires set forth. That expediates that process because I think your timeframe is extremely, extremely tight with that's the need. Especially if you have a grant partner, but then you gotta go find the partner, then you gotta authorize the grant, then you gotta go to the company. You know what I'm saying? So it's, 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 it's a ball rolling downhill really quick.
So on that note, maybe we could do, um, the ninth, which would give us a little more time to, uh, figure out what we would like to suggest and then move up that timeline.
That's fine. I, 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 I will not be here, I'll be, I, that's fine. That, that's a perfect day.
Yeah. I, and we, I know this is difficult and, and this might be just something that we may need to follow up with on finding another date. But that way we can make recommendations and action item and then open it up to the public for another, um, follow-up and, and put session for heat funding as part of our work plan. Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, no later. So the sooner the better. Are there any other comments right now?
Yeah. I, I, I just need clarification. What's happening? I, 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 I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm confused. I've heard points of interest. Right now, I just, what, what are we doing?
So we're trying, we're trying to find a time that we can have a meeting to, uh, agendize an action item to make re- recommendations to the city council, um, through publicly notified item. And because the, possibly the city council might be meeting on our normal meeting night on the twenty-eighth of March, we're gonna take that meeting and move it up within the next week and a half or so. So I think Brian's gonna, um, Chief Dunson's gonna reach out to us, um, and find a time that kind of works, a day and a time that works for all of us, or a quorum. That's, yes, well.
I still, they will be. I, I just, I mean, it's not going over my head, it's just not going in my head. We're meeting, okay, we already have a scheduled meeting for the twenty-eighth. We hear that, that possibly may be a city council meeting on that date, which will move us either to a newer, sooner date or not have a meeting. But now, understanding that, what are we, what are we going to be recommending to the city council? Other than what you proposed earlier? What is, what is our meeting?
So that's part of the meeting is that we're gonna kind of brainstorm ideas about what items we would like to see the city of Seaside participate in reaching out, um, for an application for heat funding? Which partly came from the meeting that you, you were part of earlier today. To sort of package that into a recommendation to the city council.
The, the reason why it's so confusing is, you're right, we have that meeting scheduled on the twenty-eighth. But we just wanna make sure that if we come up with any, uh, more ideas before then, that we get them in because the application is due on the, the first and they're already going to have drafts of ideas. And we just wanna make sure as we, as we're synthesizing this together as a group for, for the first time, if anything else perks up. Because I, I've been inspired by some of the stuff that the city manager said. So we're just trying to get in an additional meeting for more suggestions for the, the grant. What makes it confusing is, why are we having so many meetings? It's because the, the grant is due in what, like, four weeks? Not even four weeks, that's why.
Okay, my understanding, I, I understand what you're saying. But when you say that, then my understanding goes back to last night, that they partnered with Community Women Services Gathering Places. I understand about the, uh, discussion we had today. But my understanding regarding the application process was going to be preceded with, by gathering women and.
You're, you're absolutely correct, there are.
So, I mean, so, no, I, I know that we should play a part as far as the homeless committee. You know, because that's what we were.
For the heat funding, there's actually separate pieces to it that are designated for different.
No, I know that too.
Okay, so we're, we.
So that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what, so we're, we're not talking about the shelter, um, that's, that's a separate, um, yeah.
Okay, register.
Okay, okay. All right. So I would like to actually open it up to the public for some input about our work plan and, uh, heat funding. Um, and then we can come back to the calendar after that, if that's okay. So, please.
Good evening, Pastor Lusk, Bethel Baptist Church, my first meeting. Thanks Pastor Murray for telling me to come. Um, just a little small, I, I'm a little confused just by the listening and, and my confusion is because the timeframe. We don't have time, in my opinion, for this group to meet, to talk, then to this group to, with this group to come to me to talk. And then after this group, homeless group meets with the subgroup that met today, that he was there, meets, then the city manager is gonna go and have another meeting with whomever to begin to write a proposal and a plan for us to meet on April first. We're gonna miss every bit of opportunity and money that's out there. And I understand all of the different separations of heat and the different programs. But I'm asking for clarity so we don't miss. If he, if Pastor Murray is already representing this committee on that special group, the best, it would be a thought that we guys would, timeframe, we don't wanna miss the window. And we can sometimes miss windows by meeting when we all have the same objective at heart, which is to help the homeless. I mean, we just don't wanna miss this window. And if we meet too much, from what I'm hearing, we're gonna miss the window. And, and how that is, is we will still put a proposal in, but the proposal won't be as what it should be because we've met so much and we just not, didn't receive the funding. We gotta think about that, over-meeting sometimes will make us miss this window. They might not pick our proposal because we overmet, because too much is in it. We need to get something specifically done that at the end of the day, you all at this committee can come to the gentleman, the city manager back here and say, hey, Seaside got three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from this thing. The homeless committee wants, needs thirty thousand of it. Let's work that out. And you take that thirty thousand and do whatever you feel the homeless committee needs to do with it to help Seaside. But meeting to figure out what specifics we would need for this group and that group is gonna make us miss the window. And in my heart, I just don't want us to miss the window. Thank you for letting me speak.
Good evening, my name's John Wizard, I'm a member of the city council. So for, um, I, I think there's a, an ongoing conversation where there's, um, people are lacking bits of information from other, there's a, a lack of, of a continuity of understanding. And I think that comes from, um, our religious leaders this morning having, um, a meeting talking about, uh, nonprofit, uh, pursuit of some of that money. Nonpro- a church as part of nonprofit. But, but nobody on the homeless committee aside from, from Pastor Murray and nobody, um, else on the council. And I don't know who in staff was told about the meeting. I didn't know the meeting was happening when I saw Pastor Murray this morning, 'cause I happen to be at city hall for another reason. He asked me if a meeting had started and I didn't know what meeting he was talking about. And it turns out there was a meeting where the faith community and local nonprofits participated with the mayor and, and city staff to, uh, identify sections of the heap grant that they might go after. And so, if, um, I were, um, a member of your committee, that would help me understand why there's a conversation about having a meeting sooner than the twenty-eighth. From a, uh, policy standpoint, I'm not sure that it's a good use of your time to have a meeting after the first week of March to talk about what kind of money you might go after. Just with the, the amount of time that goes into, um, brainstorming, um, thinking through what, what's possible and then thinking about what's practical and then writing that down and then reviewing it and going through drafts and then submitting that, you need all the time you can get, but certainly waiting until the second week of March is not going to make you more successful. So I would recommend meeting in the first month, first week of March if, if that's something you wanna do. I encourage you to do it, but you've gotta do that sooner than later, um, without any delay. I'm also concerned that as our religious community has explained with you, that we can experience sometimes something called paralysis by analysis. Where you meet so much that you never get anything done, because you're always busy analyzing things. And so, I think the remedy to that is haste. Don't allow yourselves to be paralyzed, to act decisively immediately. And... But be thorough in that. So, if you're going to meet, which I encourage you to do, I would, you know... Because of the incredibly truncated timeline, you guys are kinda forced to do these things faster than you might normally do. So, if you're going to have that meeting, I think in this next month, you guys are gonna be incredibly busy with this. And it's a volunteer position, and I applaud you all for giving up your evenings to do this. And if this is something you wanna pursue, which I hope that you do, I think that you'll have to accept that this month of March, you're gonna be busy. Thank you.
I'm thinking like everybody else, you guys are operating on a short time schedule. Remember, I believe, if I remember right, Community Human Services and Gathering for Women are gonna put the paperwork together. So, if they're gonna put the paperwork together to apply for the grant, then a representative, I'm not saying, it can be anybody, should sit down with them between now. Start working with them right now. I mean, don't sit here and have a council meeting and a commission meeting and decide, well, this is where we wanna go. You put down your wish list and see if they can incorporate it into the grant ahead of time. And they'll let you know whether they can or can't, because there's very specific guidelines on that grant. So, my recommendation is, if you guys wanna save some time, that you can put a list of... What do you wanna call it, a wish list together, and have somebody, either the staff, or whoever you're gonna work with, Community Human Services. Sit down and see what they can put together. And it saves a whole bunch of time. And if Community Human Services can't do it, they have grant writers all the 24 hours a day, seven days a... I'm just joking, they don't have that long. But they do have grant writers over there all the time. So, you know, my suggestion is to expedite it, put your wish lists together, have somebody from staff coordinate it, and see what they can do.
Good evening. On the bright side, the money that you allocated to the council for the $40,000 for the food wagon is operational. And it's being used. And hopefully soon, they'll do ceremony, they'll be showing at city hall. The city logos on there are very grateful for the wagon, because the other one was not working, so therefore, they could not feed the homeless. So, that's on the bright side. The... My reality is, I think I'm a proponent of community meetings. I have countless community meetings. Me and Mr. Wizard just had one. And we... And whatever you wanna do, I think it's extremely important that you do it well. I know I spent at least 30 hours of my time organizing that community meeting, promotion wise. I would guess Mr. Wizard spent 20 to 30 hours promoting that community meeting. City didn't spend any time promoting that meeting. So, 60 hours to get 180 people there. A thought process might be, after that April 1 deadline, you... The plan is there. May, June, then you have a community meeting where... Because the homeless problem is not gonna go away. You are not gonna solve the homeless problem by May 1 or April 1. It's just not gonna happen. If you... No, I won't go there, but it's not gonna be solved. May 1, April 15th, April 20th, when you have time to organize something that is well-done, and people are aware of it. That you can share with them what is going on, and what can we do six months from now. So, there's, you know, prior planning, there's something about that that makes sense. I agree with the Reverend and Reverend Murray, and even Mr. Mancini. And I think the city manager, that information is... Needs to be gathered quickly to move things forward. If it doesn't get... If information is not gathered, it can't... It will get lost in the process. It just... That just happens. Be it a subcommittee using Reverend Murray as a source, and one other committee meeting to provide the additional information, might be an idea. I just know that once you have the ideas, city council has wonderful ideas on occasion. If we tell staff to do them, it doesn't happen by itself. So, if you have 10 wonderful ideas, that's great. But it's gonna take them time to put it together, to find the schedule, and figure a way who all these partners are to make it work. And they have jobs that are larger picture. So, think of the planning process. Think of doing it very well, whatever you do. You are all good people, you are definitely committed to this group, but you're representing the Seaside, and I know you do that. And we wanna do things well, and we wanna find the best answers. And we know that April 1, the problem is not gonna go away. You are here for a lifetime. Because the homeless is gonna take a lifetime to solve. All we can do is help move the ball down the field and start making solutions. And that's part of your responsibility, as well as the churches, as well as the council. Hopefully, that confuses you more, but I just wanted to share that.
Thank you for opening the meeting. Lisa Sani. I'm gonna let all the logistics be, and lots to think about. I had some other ideas as you were talking, and just things I had jotted down. Tent cities. I've been seeing a lot of articles, Seattle and San Jose and other places are doing tent cities. And I really think we've got a lot of land and opportunity for that. And I also think it could be something temporarily, I mean, as we're looking at money for 2021, you know, that we try and get something sooner. And I think that's also something to even get out the food chain to the county. That, you know, we need to really address some of these things with that portable showers and bathrooms, obviously. Secondly, Block 137, I understand that's zoned in our city. I would ask that we also ask the city, and I believe it was committee member Molina that brought up, you know, asking the city for what other properties, what other zoning things do we have in place? And I think even the city manager came back and said, you know, we'd have to work with the planning commission and kinda flush that out. But I think that's something to bring up to the city council. What else... What other areas do we have? What other areas in our city can we do this? And I know that Block 137 is locked and loaded, already zoned. But where within that are things? Call for partnerships, I think we're all in agreement with that. A faith-based survey, I think that might be worthwhile. Survey Monkey, doing a, you know, what's already in our community, and how can we fit the pieces together? And this is gonna be, you know, I think even a short-term, and then obviously, long-term thing too. I was on the county site, there is a document about 50 pages of homeless services, and it was outdated. I think it was a year or two old. But hopefully, that's something that the county can take on too, to really... I think there's so much with this networking, you know, there's 20 touchpoints to a case management, you know, for each homeless person. And really trying to understand where those different assets are within our community. And finally, I just wanna close with, really, we need to be looking at affordable housing, rental assistance, long-term housing. I think it was committee member Alan that spoke to that. And I think, you know, homelessness, we've got all kinds of different people and demographics within that community. But really, as a community, we need to be looking at that, and looking at the stability of our economic growth as well. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I didn't think I had to say anything, but as I listened to everything sitting there, I decided to say something. Homelessness is not a disease. Presently, I just found out that I am homeless, I'm in the homeless status. And so, I am here to explain to every one of us here that it doesn't have a face, and it doesn't have a name. I came here two months ago, the first part of this year, giving someone a ride. That said they were dying, and they had to get to this hospital here. And I thought, well, why don't you go to... Why don't you go to Portland? Because I know they have good things there. And they said, no, the hospital here is the one that does the thing. So, me being a helper, no one wants the help, I bring them here. And I came here, and my vehicle broke in Marina. And then it broke the trailer from the RV, and then it hits out the thing from the muffler. So, that was double whammy. Well, here I am limping, because I just had to go to the hospital, because it's just one hitting each other, and it leaves me homeless. When I went to get help, I found out that I was homeless. When you're wearing the shoe, it's a different thing from sitting at home, reading papers, looking at it on TV, hearing it, seeing it. When you're in there, I suffer hunger. I thought I was... Just now, I feel like I was passing out, because I can't get around to do anything. I'm new here, I don't know anywhere. So, when you sit back at home and look at TV, and hear sounds, and you hear things, things, these things are real. It's happening to me. My last job, I was making $6,000 a month. And in my little RV that I have, once I... Now that I'm homeless, and I can have time to look back at things, I have taken in and fed over 30 people from my RV. That's the kind of work that I do. And right now, I can't help anyone, because I'm limited, you know, I'm out of my own wack myself. And so, I'm kind of a little bit concerned that I don't... I can't handle myself to handle someone else. But like you were saying, the food, it is important, because I could... I walk over to Sun... Monday morning, when I couldn't take it anymore, I get on my crutches, and I walk, try to walk over to Burger King. And a guy turned around and gave me a ride. He didn't even know that's because I was starving, I didn't know what to do. So, these things are real, and we are real human. We are real people, and we need the help. It's out there. And I'm here representing those that you don't know. At nights where I stay at, I could hear people going 2, 3 o'clock all through the night, because they don't have a place to stay. It's raining, and it's cold out here, it's awful. I think we really should have a day when the people who are sitting in seats here, and in cars, and in homes, that they should switch out with the people that are homeless. Just put them in your home for a day, and go out there and live the life like them, and see if it makes a difference, because it should make a difference. So, whether it's the city council, whether it's whoever, it's real. People are hurting. I am hurting. I represent a hurting person today. Thanks for listening to me, and God bless you all.
Madam Chair, point of order, if I may. Regarding the meeting this morning, I was invited to the meeting. And when I was invited to the meeting, I was invited as Reverend Murray, not a part of this committee. Although I am a part of this committee. So, there was nothing hidden regarding the meeting from anyone. It was just a meeting of what will be done. And I thought that Mr. Malin did a great job. And not what will be done, what could we do? And the homeless committee was brought up, but I wasn't there representing the homeless committee. And one of the things I was asked to do in my representation was brought up by you regarding one of your items of safe parking and everything. I think along with Mr. Wizard, that over-meeting, yeah, is too much, and we don't have the time. I do know, by listening, that if, if possible, we were able to meet sometime between now and this weekend, if that was possible, for a special meeting, collaborate it, and God thoughts of what we feel we could take part in, or we can add as a homeless commission, that even with the agenda being pretty... The city manager is always asked if there's anything that comes up within 72 hours. And so, I'm saying that if it's possible, you know, if we could, or a quorum, or whatever, was able to meet. Are those items that you brought in, the idea that Molina brought, to add it to the agenda for this coming Thursday? To be considered, and to know that the homeless committee is here, also play a part, is listening. Those are some of the things that when we gave money to I-Health, gave money to Salvation Army, and we had in reserve. They're still, as we know before, that they're still a part of the homeless population that we're not meeting. Because not everybody that's homeless is gonna make it to the food bank. They're not gonna make it to Salvation Army. You know, they're gonna try whatever they can to survive down there in the gully of Laguna Grande. And it's not that... And I appreciate your willingness to be transparent and open. And it's not something that we, again, have not discussed, you know? But we have been so busy, you know, before heat came up, listening to presentations about what we can do to help existing organizations. And I think now we see that we are in existence to help our own, from this committee standpoint. And that we don't need 501(c)(3) organizations to do what some of the things we discussed that we can do. You know, we may need some volunteers, you know, to go pass out bus tickets, go pass out laundry coins, go pass out meals. You know, we may need to go pass out blankets. And I think that that's something, a part of whatever is going to happen with this money of application, regardless of our annual budget. I think those things that you brought up, I think those immediate needs, those tangible things, you know, that maybe churches ain't doing or are doing, but they're not going out and walking the streets. They're not going out and meeting the needs, you know? Not saying that they're not doing it, but sometimes churches say, we do it at this time, come to us. You know, everybody can't come to you. So, we need to meet the needs of the people. And I'll go to say that maybe we can with training, because it doesn't take hard, it just takes evidence-based stuff. And I know, sitting to my left, we got enough intelligent people that can handle. If we do do an emergency shelter, if we do do, I mean, rental deposits and things, I think that that's something that we could keep earmarked within our budget to... Somebody to submit an application. We come together, and it doesn't take the whole committee. Just a couple of people say, hey, we approve this. Submit the thing to the finance department, and boom, give them $1,500 for a deposit. Give them $300 for a week in a hotel. I think that's... Whatever we're gonna do for Seaside, we gotta take it back at this committee. And we gotta do those things that have been discussed and brought forward, you know? We could do the tent city. There's RVs parked, you know, over here. There's a dirt spot right there. Why can't we ask the city planning commission to, hey, lift, you know, you found it easy to identify that shelter, you know? You found it easy. So, what can we do to tweak? The city orders us to put some porta-potties, showers, right in that dirt spot, in between that parking lot and Chili's. uh, in between that parking lot and Chili's, and, and, and put up fifty tents. I mean, they're doing it under a bridge in Modesto, if you, uh, Google Modesto B. And they're nice, they're nice. And I think that that's something that we can reach as a committee. And we don't need a five oh one C three, you know, because that's a long, a way to process. We got ten thousand dollars, let's do something with that ten thousand dollars right now. Shoot for, uh, that other money, you know, to come. But we don't know when we're gonna get it, if we get it. But what we got, hey, it's for a great cause, let's, let's do it. You know, even if it's just five thousand, let's invest in the homelessness, because those people that are walking up Charles Street from Laguna Grande, they're not the ones that are gonna come to that shelter on, on Olympia Broadway. They're not gonna come, okay? And, and now we get complaints on Facebook and everything about a homeless person resting, sleeping in front of a abandoned bit, well, you ain't got no business there, so let him sleep there. Open up the doors, let him in, you know? Give him accountability and responsibility. So, th- this is what I do. Outside of this meeting, that's how I, 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 I go, I go. I don't, I don't, I don't deal with the politics. I'm not good at dealing with politics, I deal with ministry, you know? I, I deal with hands-on ministry. And so, I was there because I was invited, you know? I wasn't there because I wanted to. I was there because I was invited to that meeting. And the things that they asked me to do, you identified them. But I'd rather do it this way, you know? The faith base is still involved.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna ask for any other public comment before I close public comment? Okay, public comment is closed, I'll bring it back to the committee.
Okay. You ladies and Reverend Murray, they have had some great ideas, okay? But I've been here since nineteen seventy-two. Um, I have been involved with the homeless since I, since I got here, because I was on the board for Shelter Outreach Plus. Um, I've worked, I've worked I Health for the ladies now that were doing that. And I saw a lady walk in and she just went, oh Marilyn, anybody can be homeless. And I appreciate what you said, because I was just really shocked to see her there. Anybody can. I could be, if I didn't have such a wonderful husband taking care of me, okay? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anyway, I have loved all of these ideas, but I think that we're spinning our wheels trying to get to this heap money. Now, we are going, we've got some money already, right? Like you said, okay. Uh, I know, I'm new to this board, okay? Um, the heap money, you realize that that parcel is the county property, okay? It is in Seaside, so it's up to the county and the city council, the city of Seaside, our representatives, to work that out and go after that money. And they are doing it. The meeting last night was wonderful, wasn't it last night? It was wonderful, and they're proceeding forward. Now, we're coming in with ideas of what, we want some money. Of course, everybody wants money. But, we need to concentrate, I think, on seeing what's gonna happen. Thereafter it, they know that the deadline is the first, right? That meeting that you had today, Reverend Murray, I, I don't know, didn't know anything about it. Um, and I think it's good that we find out all of these things that are happening and we proceed forward, because you've had great ideas. And there are a lot of nonprofits out there doing what you're, you've been saying here. I know, I'm having a meeting tomorrow with another organization at the food bank. So, I will find out what their plans are and what they do for us. Meals on Wheels is another great one. And that's here, in this area, Monterey County. It's also in Salinas, but it's here. Um, I know that there's a lot, a lot of nonprofits out there, and they are getting their money, they're getting donations. And when, um, Community Human Services, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm afraid that I'm using first names. All right, Community Human Services and Gathering Place for Women, I'm also working with them. I've been there, both of them. I know what these people do. We've gotta coordinate and bring everybody together. And that would be a wonderful world if we could do that. And I think basically, that's what we need this commission should be doing, is bringing it together. You know, it's kinda late now to ask staff to do demands, we want this and we want that. It's a great idea, but I think we need to work with the city council and probably our chairperson should be the one to really find, you know? We need to work with them. And I think we can do a lot of the things that you're saying. I think more food, more, more food pantries would be great. Uh, Wick is still here, isn't it? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, and I know that there's a lot that we can do, but let's not jump in and say, we want this and we want that. Let's just go forward and have a good plan as to what we wanna do. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Um, so I think some things have gotten a little bit crossed over. So, we have a work plan that we're gonna, that we're incorporating the heap fund recommendations within, because it was not agendized. Uh, part of the homeless committee's mission is to make recommendations to the city council regarding specifically, um, implementing needed homeless services and facilities, which is the heap fund. So, my recommendation, and this is what we can decide to do or not to do, is that our March twenty-eighth meeting will most likely be moved. We can take advantage of this situation and move that meeting closer to like within a week. And it's not to ask for any kind of funding from the heap funds, it's only to simply make recommendations for some of the things that we would like to see the city of Seaside ask for. So, in collaboration with the faith-based community, um, and perhaps, but we cannot make that decision tonight, and that, that's why I'm asking to agendize it to make an action meeting if we want to. Or we can wait until we are directed by the city council to make any further moves. So, either we can take the initiative to be a part of this process or we can wait to be directed. But it is our duty to make recommendations to the city council. So, that's where that change of meeting and the recommendations for the heap funding comes from. But we can agree not to do that, and we can wait until the city council makes decisions, so.
Madam Chair, uh, well said, uh, thank you, Ms. Mancini. Point of clarification again, and, and, and so, I, I'm, I'm just doing, and all that getting a good understanding. In particular, what that meeting was for and the allocation of, uh, I mean, what they're going, was for the youth affected, and so, I guess that's why they brought CPY and Village Project. And so, a certain amount is speci-, uh, specified for youth. So, uh, uh, yeah, so it's like six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and then it goes up to, uh, the age of twenty from sixteen, then there's nothing from sixteen to twenty-four. So, um,
And, and so, this is what I would like to agendize, is that we make, take this as an action item so that we can support the city working with the Village Project and asking for heap funding. Like, that is exactly what I would like our meeting to do. But I've heard from the public that sometimes too many meetings is not enough. But we are, we are gonna be part of this, um, and this is why we're here.
Yeah, no, I was, I was only saying that to give the overall aspect of why that meeting took place.
Sure.
Um, and so, uh, that, that's the only reason why.
Yeah.
I support the, this, this committee. Uh, and that's why I separated myself in identification when this came about, because I was invited as a minister and for a specific reason aspect. Um, and so, I know that the committee was brought up. But what I really want to say is that I support what has already been, and I think the consensus was, was a support, uh, with the addition of what Natalia, you know, uh, brought up, uh, from what you brought as far as planning action items. And I think that's great, because I think somehow, some way, we need to, and I don't think they did in attention, I think just the rest, but they, we need to be identified as a player, you know, in this, in, in this whole scope. You know, that, that our identi-, our identification, whether it's on our Thursday or not, you know, dealing with this, you know, uh, needs to be, uh, identified from our city council, that there is something already in existence. You know, that we did talk about the heap money, you know, before it got to the point of, uh, the idea of Seaside, you know, being, uh, interest for homeless shelter, Mr. Councilmember Wizard, you know, uh, brought it to us. And other members had identified that money along with, uh, Mr. Dempsey. So, I think that's a big part, is that we are identified by the city council that no matter what goes on, and no, and yes, we just recommend, you know, I understand all that, but don't leave us out of the game, you know? And, and, and again, if it's you, Madam Chair, that represents and speaks for this committee, you know, I, I believe that with this Quorum, you have that, you know, support to do that. Uh, and, 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 and I think that that's, I think, you know, as long as we don't violate the Brown Act. I think, I think, I think that's, I think that's, you know?
And, and that's the tricky part, is that, and that's why I'm asking for another meeting, which is unfortunate, um, but if we would like to do that and pursue that, we need to make it the right way. Um, so, I guess I'm gonna ask, is that something that we want to do? Do we wanna have a meeting sometime next week, before the city council meets? To come up with, or not, or not?
So, so briefly, Pastor Murray, you, you hit the nail on the head. I just wanna make sure that our collective voice is a part of the process, which I, I do feel it is. And I apologize to everyone, I, I just, I did wanna have another meeting. However, however, I am happy just to submit my ideas, whatever ideas I have directly to the powers that be. So, we don't have to meet, uh, our voice is important. I'm happy to submit my ideas to the powers that be and copy, folks.
I guess that's my question, I don't know that we can actually do that without agendizing it and making an action item, because you're representing our voice, which we did not agendize tonight to be taken action on them. That's...
Well, I, they, I think they are just ideas. I mean, and, and if they go, if they're directed to either myself or the city manager to
Present.
Include in, in that presentation to the city council.
I don't know that they can, it would be, it would, it could not come in a form of a recommendation from this homeless committee, though, without
Right.
An action item. It would just simply be ideas.
Ideas, just as we heard some from the public.
But then, is it fair to the public that their, their ideas are not similarly represented by the city manager in the presentation?
I, I, I took all the public comment down, and if there were ideas within that.
Okay. All right.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Right. Then let's carry on.
And, um, I pretty much need everybody's comment no later than tomorrow. So, I heard, heard some of them, some are gonna be emailed, if you have anything, because I'd have to get it to the city manager.
Point of order, please.
Sure. Um, so, so I would need that by tomorrow, because I am leaving town on Sunday morning. And, um, but I'd be happy to gather those in one document, get those to the city manager.
Sounds good. Let's do it. The only reason I was worried about another meeting is if we were gonna make any actual recommendations that came from the city coun-, uh, homeless committee. But if they're just gonna become in the form of an idea that the city council will be presented, yeah, I don't think that violates anything, that's fine. So, we don't need to meet again.
If you're comfortable with that, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. We'll, we'll keep our regular scheduled March twenty-eighth meeting until we find out that it needs to be moved, and then we can go from there.
We'll know soon, with plenty of time, whether we need to move that, I think. I mean, I
I just
We'll know by the twenty-first.
Yeah, yeah. So, there, all right, any, I think that's it. I think, I don't know that anybody, I think we've shared with, um, I know I've shared with everybody what I've been up to. Does anybody else have any comments for separate, for, uh, committee member reports?
Yes. Uh, I would just like to say that I think this has been one of the most, uh, participated meetings since we've, since we've come together, you know? Uh, I think it's been one of the most informative, uh, and, uh, and, and I appreciate it, you know, uh, because, uh, sometimes we're out in an hour, forty-five minutes, but we get work done. But I appreciate the public coming, um, and speaking. I appreciate your leadership and that of, uh, Chief Dempsey's and all the, uh, members of this committee, because I believe that this one thing is in our heart, you know? Uh, I believe it was all my heart, that we all have this in our heart to do more than what we can do and more than what money can buy. Um, and that was a powerful testimony by that young lady tonight. And so, I think we need to call the police department, though, and have those two guys back there escort it out.
Do you, do any of you have anything to share, anything else? All right? Okay, that's adjourned.